We're getting the signal that it's time to start. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Tyler Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for March the 2nd, 2021. I'm sure everybody has recognized this as Texas Independence Day. It's not on our agenda, but I think we can all celebrate that most of us are Texans and have been for a long, a long, long time. First order of business is the roll call. Who's doing it? Zach?
Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
Commissioner Phoenix?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Whitney?
Here.
Commissioner Swaim? Commissioner Landis?
Here.
Commissioner Nichols?
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum today. The Planning and Zoning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council. Any item approved today will be heard by the City Council at its regular meeting on Wednesday, March 24th, 2021, commencing at 9:00 a.m. If you received a notice for this meeting, also received a notice for the City Council meeting. Subdivision Platts approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission solely unless there's a request for waiver of escrow fees or construction. Only the City Council makes financial decisions. If any item is denied, the applicant has 10 calendar days to file a written appeal with the Planning Department. The appeal will then be acted upon by the City Council. If you are here to speak for or against an item, when that item is called for review, you may call 903-363-0651 and you'll be placed on hold until that item is open for comments. When you are speaking, please state your name and address. For the record, comments should be limited to five minutes or less, though extensions of time may be granted by the Chair upon request. At the conclusion of this meeting, there'll be a workshop for our next meeting, and it will be here in the room for those that are present. And otherwise, it will be held on Microsoft Teams.
Actually, the meeting will be in two weeks.
Oh, so it's not tonight?
No.
Oh, it is. March 16th. I said today. March the 16th. Okay. And of course, that meeting, like all meetings, are open to the public. First item on our agenda is consideration of minutes from the regular commission and teleconference meeting of February the 2nd, 2021. Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes and any comments, corrections, changes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reed, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from February 2nd, 2021.
Motion's been made and...
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that Commissioner Swaim has joined us. We're glad you're here, Blake. The first zoning item on our agenda is ZA 21-001, Unified Development Code. Kyle, share with us what we're doing here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This first item is a part of our biannual Unified Development Code review updates. And so these are some proposed amendments to the Unified Development Code and some clarification amendments as well. The first item here is a proposal to allow for projected image signs in the downtown Business Arts and Culture District, the DBAC district. And this area is primarily our downtown core. Any property in that zone or that area could be zoned DBAC, and therefore, this would apply to those properties. And so a projected image sign is one that is projected from an electronic device onto a wall. And the proposal here is to allow this type of signage on buildings in the downtown area that are at least four stories or 40 feet in height, and ones that have a kind of a solid blank window or blank wall. There would be restrictions on having this type of signage on any windows or anything that could create any other effects with the light. So really, it's intended to kind of beautify or provide other alternative promotional activities or advertising for some of those large blank walls that you see downtown. The property would be required to have a special use permit, which is approved by City Council. And special use permits are time-bound. Typically, they're for one to three years initially. And also, there can be conditions placed on the approval of the special use permit. The other considerations with this proposal are to allow for the maximum area of the projected image to be up to 80% of the wall that it's facing. There's a restriction on any animated or fading transitions of the image, so that there's at least one minute of hold between messages, and so you don't have that effect of, you know, the distraction that you expect or you're trying to prevent with signed regulations. So this would accomplish or be consistent with that. And also, the City Council can approve the allowance for off-premise advertising as well. So this could be used for either advertising the businesses on the property in the building, or it can be used for advertising elsewhere in the downtown area or other points of interest throughout the city. And then also, I'm sorry. And so that's what's been requested today. And again, I want to emphasize that the approval will be through a special use permit, which those are time-bound, and there are conditions that could be placed on those. And then also, the special use permits can be revoked if there's any violation of the approval. So the next proposal here is to clarify that or provide the city the ability to ensure that the quiet zone, the railroad quiet zone that we have here downtown, right behind the building here, that any new driveways don't come into conflict with that quiet zone. So this runs from West Elm Street to East Duncan Street on the railroad just behind us here to the northwest. And the main restriction there is that there can't be a driveway within 60 feet of the gate arm of the crossing. So this will allow the ability to review driveway permits for that restriction. Next amendment here...
Kyle, can I just ask you one question? On how many railroad quiet zones do we have in Tyler?
We have one.
Just one?
We have one, yeah. Yeah, right here. And it's been something we've been working on for quite a while, and make sure that we can preserve that quiet zone, whatever we need to do to...
All right, thank you. I thought there were more, but thanks for clarifying that.
Yes, sir. This next item here is to clarify or make some consideration for plan developments as it pertains to landscaped buffer yards. And so the purpose of buffer yards are to provide, you know, some sort of transition or protection between uses that may not be compatible through their zoning category. So by and large, these are intended to separate incompatible uses. And so one thing that was identified is that for plan developments, plan development may be restricted through its approval to certain zoning districts. And so as the table you see here shows, that there would have to be a buffer yard between, say, the PCD that's highlighted there, and then maybe a C1 zoning district. But there are examples of Plan Commercial District, the PCD, being restricted to C1 uses or C1 zoning. And therefore, this is really just providing staff and council the ability to use some discretion on that. So the next proposal here is really clarifying that all the retained wall standards are in the Chapter 6 of the City Code, which is the building code. So what we had in the UDC was pretty much saying the same thing as the building code. So because one may update before the other, we just want to make sure that everything is all the same. This next one is to clarify, as it pertains to solar panel screening, the UDC requires that any solar installation be screened from a public street. As we've seen changes in technology and the application of solar panels on the roofs of homes, we wanted to clarify that as long as it's not an installation that kind of sticks out, then essentially, if it's clushed with the roof and runs parallel with the roof line, that there's no need to screen that from the road. That's not creating obstruction or an slightly issue in neighborhoods. So this has been the application of this standard, is that if it's essentially flushed with the roof, then there's no need to screen it. If it's on the ground, you know, like a large ground-mounted installation, then you might want to screen that.
And Kyle, these are not aesthetic considerations. They're safety and blockage of view kind of... okay.
That's right. All right. Next slide. So that concludes the clarification. I think the other items that we identified were, there was a definition of a vehicle which was outdated, and so we updated that with the definition from the Transportation Code, just to be consistent with that. And so these recommendations were presented to the Unified Development Code Review Committee on January 27th, and to the Developers Roundtable Group on February 11th. The Main Street Board also heard the presentation on the downtown signage proposal. And all these groups were in general agreement with the proposed changes to the UDC. With that, staff recommends approval of the proposed amendments.
All right, thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle? These items are brought to us by the UDC Steering Committee. Any questions for Kyle? If not, are there persons here who wish to comment on these proposed changes to the UDC? If not, would a Commissioner like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve ZA 21-001.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve these changes to the UDC. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. That brings us to Z21-003, Independence Park LLC. Kyle?
This is a zone change request from C2 General Commercial District to RMF Multifamily Residential District. And this is to allow for the construction of a 220-unit apartment complex. The properties to the north, south, and west are currently zoned C2 and are undeveloped. The properties to the east is currently located outside the city limits. To the south is, like I mentioned, is C2 undeveloped, but further to the south is a location of another apartment complex, as you can see there on the map. This request would amend the future land use guide from general commercial to multifamily, which is kind of consistent with how we've already seen this area develop. Like I mentioned, the applicant plans to develop 220 units on this property, and we do have a rendering of that. And so these would be three-story buildings with access to James Farren Parkway, and then also another secondary access point to the commercial areas to the north. Of the notices that we sent out, zero were returned in favor. We did receive one notice in opposition from a property owner that's located outside the city limits, as a courtesy, the city does provide notice to property owners outside the city limits within 200 feet. However, the opposition is not factored into the protest calculation with the request. The concern from the neighbor, however, was related to some of the activity that took place with the other apartment complex. Some of the construction activity along that street there was, you know, there was a lot of activity during that phase. And then also concerns about the loss of trees and vegetation in the area. Staff has reviewed the request and anticipates no significant impact on services and facilities. And staff recommends approval of the zone change from C2 to RMF.
Thank you, Kyle. I want an apartment located there on the top floor because there's a view. You can see about 40 miles. It's really pretty. Are any persons here who would like, are any questions for Kyle? If not, are there persons here who would like to comment?
Yes, sir.
If we have someone online, let's let them participate.
Yes, sir. One moment, please.
Sure.
Hello?
Caller, can you hear us?
Caller, can you hear us? I can hear you.
All right.
Am I on?
If you're online, would you please state your name and address for the record so that we can hear your comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Mark Priestner, Planning Concepts, 3815 Old Bullard Road. As Kyle said, I just want to point out, this Independence Park was always designed with the intention of mixed uses, including, you know, multifamily if that should come up. This has been designed in a way that it's gated, and this is a market rate project. So we're trying to conserve some of the trees and make it that type of setting. It's got a trail system. The other thing I want to point out is that in comparison to the C2 that it currently is, the traffic generated by the 220 units is just about half of what would be generated as the C2 retail or commercial. So we think it's a good use. Again, it's taking advantage, as you said, Mr. Chairman, the views, the location. And again, what we're trying to do in this whole area is create a mixed-use development that supports both retail office and residential in it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for your comments. Any questions for Mr. Priestner? If not, again, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Are there other persons here who would like to comment or ask questions, either online or in person?
No, sir.
If not, would a Commissioner like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reed?
Mr. Chairman, I make that we approve Z21-003.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Commissioner Reed, second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, item is approved. Next is Z21-001, Dible Companies, 5661 Chandler Highway.
This is a zone change request from C2 General Commercial District to R1A Single Family Residential District. The purpose of the request is to allow for the development of single-family homes. The properties to the north are zone R1B, single-family residential, and is currently undeveloped. The properties to the east and west are zone C2 and are developed with single-family homes. The property to the south, across Chandler Highway, is zone R1A, single-family, and is developed with some single-family homes. This request would amend the future land use guide from neighborhood commercial to single-family medium-low density. Some of the properties to the north were recently rezoned similar to this, to build some more single-family homes there. And so this is really a continuation of that. The applicant's just rezoning the northern portion of their property and keeping the remainder as C2. Of the nine notices that were sent, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and staff recommends approval of the zone change from C2 to R1A.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle? If not, are there persons here or online who would like to comment or ask questions about this item?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. If not, would a Commissioner like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reed, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Z21-001.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve this item. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Items approved. Next item on the agenda is Z21-004, Rin Tiera, Ron Ferry, and Martha Aralano, 325 Herndon Avenue. Kyle?
This is a zone change request from RMF Multifamily Residential to R1D, Single Family Attached and Detached Residential District. The applicant plans to develop detached single-family homes. All adjacent properties are zone RMF Multifamily Residential and are a mixture of single-family homes, undeveloped land, and a restaurant. The Future Land Use Guide identifies this area as single-family, medium-to-low density. This would amend the Future Land Use Guide to single-family and single-family attached, medium-high density. The applicant, again, plans to develop more single-family homes on this property, which is consistent with the goal of, from the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan, which promotes adding 3,000 more households to Tyler's North End through infill development. Of the 17 notices sent, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. Staff recommends approval of the zone change from RMF to R1D.
Thank you, Kyle. How many units are they planning to build here?
I believe they plan to add three more homes.
Three on those two lots?
That's right.
So the lots will have to be subdivided at some point?
That's right.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Kyle? Is there anyone here in person or online, on telephone, who would like to comment or ask questions about this item? Make comments.
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Z21-004.
Motion's been made...
Commissioner Swaim, second.
And seconded to approve this item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those, any opposed? Thank you, Pamela. I know you're there. I can hear your voice. All right, next is PD 21-002, West Oak Town Homes LLC. Kyle?
This is a zone change request from the DBAC Downtown Business Arts and Culture District to PMXD2, which is a planned mixed-use district. The applicant's requesting the zone change to develop a high-density apartment units, along with a parking garage, retail, and commercial office space on this property. The properties to the north are zone DBAC and are, it's currently undeveloped. To the east is also DBAC with a vacant building. And then also to the west and south are zone M1 and are light industrial but are developed with commercial uses. This request is consistent with the future land use guide, identifying the property as high-density, mixed-use. The applicant's proposing to develop apartment units with a maximum density of 150 units per acre. They plan to, they're proposing 95 residential units. This site plan is the bottom floor of the site. We have some other slides that show kind of the 3D rendering. And so they plan to develop a mixed-use building with multiple different tenants, and then the residential component as well. Essentially, the planned district is consistent with all the DBAC or the downtown zoning district's development standards. As you can see here, they plan to utilize the entire block, and then also have parking underneath the structure. The proposed development will help achieve a number of goals found in the downtown chapter of the Tyler First Plan, including creating a full-service mixed-use destination downtown that functions as the center of the region, as well as creating new urban residential districts through infill development, which is what would be accomplished here. Staff received one phone call in opposition with a concern to their property values with the new development. We did not receive any formal written opposition letters in opposition. All the other departments have reviewed the application and anticipate a positive impact on services and facilities. And staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval of the zone change from DBAC to PMXD2.
Thank you, Kyle. Downtown Tyler's going to look different.
Yes, sir.
Has the potential to look different. Are there questions for Mr. Kingman? If not, are there persons here in person or online who would like to comment or ask questions about this item?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve PD 21-002.
Motion's been made and...
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item's approved. That brings us to Platts. And Kyle, I think you've got some comments for us on the Platt situation. You want to share those with us now?
Yeah, so a number of these Platts were placed on the agenda, and due to the winter storm, there was some, they weren't necessarily ready by the time the agenda was put together, but some are now in the approved state. So I will go through these rather quickly, because a lot of them are approvable.
All right. Just let us know which ones are available for approval and which ones are not.
Okay.
I know that's what you're going to do.
Okay, yes. So I can list off the item number and say...
That'd be fine.
Okay. So Platt item number one, two, three, five, and six meet the criteria for approval, and staff recommends approval.
All right. Those, one, two, three, five, and six, did I get that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, those items meet the staff's criteria for approval. Are there persons here who would like to comment or ask questions about these Platts?
No, sir.
All right, if not, would some, does staff have any questions for Kyle? If not, would someone like to make a motion on those five items numbered on our agenda, one, two, three, five, and six?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that under Platts, items one, two, three, five, and six be approved.
Mr. Nichols makes a motion.
Second.
Mrs. Whitney, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item's approved. All right, Kyle, that leaves the rest of them. What can you tell us about those?
We'll start at number four, Wimberly Douglas and Phillips Edition. This is a one-lot subdivision, and the purpose of the Platts to create one...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item's approved. All right, Kyle, that leaves the rest of them. What can you tell us about those?
Let's start at number four, Wimberly Douglas and Phillips Edition. This is a one-lot subdivision, and the purpose of the Platts is to create one lot. At the present time, the Platts is not meeting the criteria for approval in accordance with the Unified Development Code, and so staff recommends denial.
All right, I guess we'll handle these individually on if, any questions for Kyle on this one, which staff is recommending denial? Are there persons here who'd like to ask questions or comment? If not, are online. If not, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reed, I'd like to make a motion that we deny F 21-019.
Second.
Commissioner Phoenix, second.
Pamela, thank you for the second. All those in favor, any questions, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item's denied. Next is F 20-158, Green Acres, Unit 9.
Yes, sir. This is a two-lot subdivision. Purpose of the Platts was to subdivide one lot into two lots. Again, at the current moment, the Platts is not meeting the criteria for approval, and therefore, staff recommends denial.
Any questions for city staff? If not, are there persons here who would like to comment or ask questions about this Platts?
No, sir.
If not, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reed, I'd like to make a motion that we deny F 20-158.
Is there a second?
Commissioner, swing second.
Been a motion to deny this Platts. Any comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Platts denied. Thank you, Pamela. Next is F 21-020, County Road 489. Kyle?
And this is an eight-lot subdivision. The purpose of the Platts is to create eight lots. And at the current moment, the Platts is not meeting the criteria for approval, and therefore, staff recommends denial.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle? If not, are there persons here who would like to make comments or ask questions about F 21-020, either in person or on the phone?
No, sir.
If not, would a commissioner like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny F 21-020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to deny that Platts. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Say aye to the motion.
Aye.
Aye. Platts denied. That brings us to Consent Platts Group A, F 21-012, and F 21, P 21-003. Kyle?
Yes, sir.
These items meet the staff's criteria?
Yes, they do. Yeah, staff recommends approval of Consent Platts Group A.
Okay. Are there persons here who'd like to comment, ask questions? If not, someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nick would like to recommend approval of Consent Platts Group A.
Commissioner Reed, second.
Any comments? Motion's been amended, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those two Platts are approved. And then we've got Consent Platts Group B. Kyle, there's five of those, and I gather all of those, none of them meet staff's criteria. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, the Platts that we're looking at in this consent group are F 21-008, F 21-009, F 21-015, F 21-010, F 20-182. Are there, any questions from commissioners? Is there a person here, any person here who'd like to make a comment or ask questions about these Platts? If not, is there a motion to deny Consent Platts Group B?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny Consent Platts Group B.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to deny this Group B Consent Platts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those Platts are denied. That brings us to Consent Construction Plans Group A, IR 21-003, and IR 21-005. Kyle?
These construction plans do not meet the criteria for approval, and therefore, staff recommends denial of Consent Construction Plans Group A.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Kyle? Are there persons here who would like to comment or ask questions about these Platts? If not, is there a commissioner who'd like to make a motion to deny these Platts?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reed, I'd like to make a motion that we deny Consent Construction Plans Group A. Commissioner, swing second.
Motion's been made and seconded to deny these Platts. Is there other, any comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are all the items that I have on my agenda. Kyle, are there other matters that the commission needs to look at today?
That'll be it.
And we'll meet again on March 26th.
March 16th?
16th.
15th or 16th? 16.
16.
16. Say 16.
16.
16, thank you. And if there's no other business, we're adjourned.
See you soon, David.